Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the February Town Council meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please look at them in attention.
Absolutely, look at my head, it's a fair place. Our gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we are blessed to be here today. We're thankful. We're thankful for the weather, whether it's cold or hot. Lord, we're thankful for the freedom that we have. We're thankful to be here today. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this governing body. Lord, you'll guide them, give them the courage and the strength to do the things that are hard to do, but are in the best interest of your son's name, Jesus Christ, and his community. We ask all this in your name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. First on the agenda is our special presentation request, and Ms. Flora Sinkford is gonna come and do a Black History Month presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening to the mayor, council, Mr. Day, and everyone present. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Flora Horton Sinkford. I'm an employee of the town of Tasswell, dispatcher administrative assistant in the police department. I've been a resident of Tasswell all my life. I would like to thank Mr. Day and the council for inviting me to do this presentation, this program, of the men and women that have paved the way for us in the black community. I really don't want to be long. In order to do the program I want to do, it could take us all night and all day, but I know nobody has time for that. So, we will try to make it as brief as we can. In celebrating Black History Month, we often hear the same names of the men and women that have made a difference in our country. However, the town of Tasswell and Tasswell County in general, we're very fortunate to have our own icons of black history living and walking amongst us in Tasswell. Black History Month allows us to refer to the accomplishment of the men and women that we are so proud of within our black community. The first person that always comes to our mind when we think of black history in our town is Ms. Minnie Holly Barnes. Ms. Minnie was a Tasswell educator and author who started Girl Scouts in our community and was recognized nationally for their leadership of Girl Scouts. She shared her love for nature with us on top of teaching us life survival skills. The young ladies within the community were excited to join scouts and appreciated the lessons taught by Ms. Minnie. Her lessons on God, success, and hard work, it has really stayed with us, with our entire life. Ms. Barnes grew up doing segregated times when receiving an education was a difficult thing for a person of color. She struggled through much adversity, but managed to accomplish a high school diploma as well as many college degrees. She attended Bluefield State College, attended a Vanover College in Canada, and she earned her master's degree from Columbia University in 1941. Ms. Barnes also gained recognition for her work with the deaf and blind. She taught at the School for the Deaf in Romly, West Virginia. As often, she has published two books, one's Halls Hurls and a Glance of Tasswell Through Holly Heritage. At this time, I invited some ladies to come in who worked with Girl Scouts under Ms. Minnie's leadership. I would like to ask them to come forward and elaborate a little more about Ms. Minnie and Girl Scouting. Mrs. Elena Combs, Ms. Brenda Davis, and Ms. Wanda St. Mia, if you'll come forward, please.
If I were in a classroom, you could hear me, but in here, I'm not quite sure. Thank you for inviting us and asking us to talk about a very favorite person, Ms. Minnie Barnes. Now, I'm probably going to say some things that Flora's already expressed. Sci-Chapter Delta Capidana is a professional educational organization that promotes women that are, I'm getting confused, women that are educators in the world and want to show their distinction for women. Ms. Minnie Barnes did that and more. She did teach at the West Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind, Bluefield State College, and at the School for the Deaf at Romly. She received her master's degree at Columbia University, as Flora just said. Ms. Minnie joined Sci-Chapter Delta Capidana on April the 7th, 1984. Her sister, Hattie Hee, was an educator and a principal at the school on the Carline and was also a member of the Sci-Chapter, two of the best women around. Ms. Minnie, as we all knew her, shared her vast knowledge to all who met her and taught many of us how to sign phrases and words. I wish now I paid a little more attention. Ms. Minnie, if you were looking down on all of us tonight, thank you for being one of the best in the Tasswell community and for being a leader to adults and to the Girl Scouts of America.
When I came to Tasswell and met Ms. Minnie, she was the Girl Scout. And I, how many of you all here know Ms. Minnie or Ms. Minnie? Quite few of you. She was a very unique person, a very humble person, and I always said that she had more knowledge in her little finger than I had in my entire hand. She knew everything, and she had a way about her, a calmness, that she was Zen before Zen was Zen. She really, and she, it made all of us feel like that, you know, we learned from her, we respected her, and anything she said, you know, she said to do it, we did it. But she didn't do it in a, you know, we just did it because we wanted to please her. We had day camp up on the hill there behind my house, and she could walk up on that hill in her seventies, I think, maybe even eighties, and the girls would be complaining because, you know, they didn't want to do this, it was too hard, but she would walk up there, and she was just an amazing lady. There are a couple of things I want to tell you about her. She shared things. I have several books that she shared with me. I've given a lot of them to the Black Diamond Girl Scout Council because they have an archive there, and especially one of her day camp books that she wrote. This one is Adventures in Nature, has her name in it, and it's 1942, I think. And the day camp book, when she came, we started day camp again. I don't know, did you all go to day camp?
Yes, we did.
Ms. Minnie was day camp person. And the True Camp Book. There are a couple of things I want to share with you. One, the girls really respected her, and she would say it was because she had a broken hair. I don't know if that's true or not, because I have broken hair, and I don't get that sort of respect. But she would, to start the programs out, she would say, "Now, girls, we need to put on our golden gloves." And that is, "Do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And then, oh, if you remember gloves, a long time ago, they had three little buttons here. And then she'd say, "God is love, love one love." And if the girls acted up, she'd say, "You got your golden gloves on." We did all respect her. One story I was to tell you, she had taken some girls camping one time, I think in a national forest, and there was a fire in the forest like the next day, and it burned a lot of acres. This is when we were out camping, you know, she taught us how to do a fire circle with rocks and, you know, how to do everything. But when you ended, when you finished, you always doused the fire, which you all know, but she would lay two sticks, crossfloss, over the ashes. And when this fire occurred after they'd been camping, someone came to her and said, you know, they thought the girls had started the fire. And she was appalled, you know, she knew they hadn't done it. But she led the man to where they had the fire, and there were those two sticks still laying there. And that has never left me, you know, proved that it wasn't you. But she, we all respected her, we all loved her, she taught us so many things. She got to meet Helen Keller, Lord Battenhouse's wife, met with her. She helped write the Girl Scout handbook so it would be friendly to the deaf and blind. I mean, she was an amazing lady. And she loved her little dog. She loved her dog.
Well, I'm going to tell about when I was under Ms. Minnie. Ms. Minnie was my Girl Scout leader. I went under Ms. Minnie from six years of age to 14 years of age, which meant I went from a Brownie to a cadet. Well, we had day camp. I knew I was the best thing there. So, you know how you have to go and you make a trail. So, they laid a trail, I went behind and I done the trail. It was time for lunch for the girls to go and gather the milk. The girls couldn't find the trail to where the milk was in the Red Creek. Well, good old Wanda had destroyed the trail. The girls couldn't find their milk, so we ate our lunch, and then I told one of the girls where the milk was. That girl sat there right in my presence and told where the milk was. Ms. Minnie said, "How do you know?" She said, "She told me." She? Well, guess what? Ms. Minnie said, "If you be good, you get to have organs. If you be bad, you have to carry onion all day." Good old Wanda had to carry onion all day. Well, needless to say, back then, everything you done every day camp you had, you got rode up into Clinch Valley. Everything went to Clinch Valley news. Good old Wanda's name was wrote up in the paper as carrying an onion all day. My mother wanted to know, what did that mean? I said, "I don't know what that means." Just ask Ms. Minnie what that was. Well, we had another day camp. Wanda acted up again. I said, "Do not, give me an onion. If you do, I will not come back again." She looked at me, she said, "Miss, you would do as I say do, when I say do it." I said, "Yes, ma'am." Many ha-ha. Me, good old Wanda again, gonna call Ms. Minnie to her face, many ha-ha. I thought I was being smart, you know, and all the girls got to laughing, and they get to calling her many ha-ha. I said, "Girls, do not respect her, disrespect her like that. Nobody can do that but me." Well, Wanda gets onion again. I was bad. But let me tell you what I really learned from Ms. Minnie. Ms. Minnie would always say, "Don't walk around with your chip on your shoulder. To flip that chip off your shoulder, keep your head up, and look at every individual straight in their eyes when they're talking to you. Don't walk around with your head hung down like you don't know who you are, because everybody in this world is somebody." And getting back to that, I said, "Ms. Minnie, sometimes I can't stand to look at people in their face because they have such ugly faces." She said, "Wanda, you must obey what I tell you so you can go far in life." I said, "How far am I gonna go, from here to there, or from there to there?" She said, "You gonna keep growing if you do as I say do." She said, "Now, keep your chin up and your head up, and you'll go far in life, and remember to look at people in their eyes." I said, "People can look at you in your face and tell you a lie, so why look at people in their eyes?" She said, "Always look in their eyes regardless of what they tell you." So, I've been trying to do that, but, because you know, some people don't like looking directly in their eyes. But another thing was about that golden glove that Ms. Combs told. She told us that at an early age, and she would always tell us, "If you have those golden gloves on, you will never touch nothing that didn't belong to you. To always remember those golden gloves." So, good old Wanda one day didn't have them golden gloves on, and I touched something that wasn't mine because I was being mean again. And then she said, "Wanda, you stand before all the girls and you tell them the golden gloves." So, I did, and I had to apologize, but I was really mean. I learned as I grew older to respect and put things in my mind what Ms. Minnie had taught us to do. And when I was at church, I used to always teach my children in church about those golden gloves, because that's one special thing that we all need to have learned, is about those golden gloves, and to do unto others as we have them to do unto us. And God is love. Thank you.
We thank you, ladies, for that beautiful tribute. I too was a scout from Brownies all the way up to a leader, so I have to say I learned a lot from Ms. Minnie through the years. We're gonna also go on with our program. Okay, we have another person in this town who gave a lot to the town of Tasswell. Anyone who ever came or passed through Tasswell probably heard of Elder George M. Dickerson. Brother George, as he was affectionately known, was a civic leader, established author, poet, as well as a mentor to the black community. He was well-known for his book of coins and many of his life's experience. One of my favorites was Ask Gladys, which records his lovely wife. Brother George and Ms. Gladys were one of the most memorable couples in this town. Brother George was very active within his church and community, and he was always available to help anything for the good cause and to help anyone in need. Like Ms. Minnie, Brother George believed in the young people and was a great example for us to follow. For many years, Brother George was guest speaker to the government, English, and history classes at Tasswell High School and also Southwest Virginia Community College, sharing his life experiences and knowledge. At this time, I asked Ms. Sandra Peery to come forward and speak about her accomplishments with her and Coach Lou Killie.
I was under the impression that I was to speak about my experience as integration.
Okay, that's fine.
That's correct.
That's fine. Whatever you feel like speaking on.
My name is Sandra Peery. I'm Harris. I was born and raised in this area, educated in this area. Attended Young Red Henry College, have an associate degree from Southwest Community College. I am the widow of Lou Harris Peery, who was the coach and teacher here in Tasswell. My perspective is from when schools were integrated, that's what I was under.
Is that pressure for that to bring you back?
Okay, so from an early age, I was aware of the disparity between being African-American and Caucasian and American, understanding why as I matured, came as I matured. In my life experience, the races grew up alongside each other, interacted and lived life, but always aware that there was a do not cross line. In the area I grew up in, there was an inherent respect for humanity. I was raised in Mudfork. I don't know how many of you know Mudfork, it's just a very small community here. I attended Tasswell County High School, an all African-American school through eighth grade. Then due to integration, I graduated from Pocahontas High School. I have no clear memory of a lot being said about integration, but I'm sure our leaders and teachers counseled us to ease any fears, apprehensions, and uneasiness of what was to come. Had they not, they would have been remiss, and knowing what was at stake, they would make sure their charges were prepared to meet the challenge. A change was coming. Be ready. A precedent was going to be set. Make it positive. Make a contribution to society. I had no expectations of what was about to come, except that we would not have, that we would now have the same opportunities as the all-white schools, no more hand-me-downs. There was a feeling of uncertainty fueled by the knowledge and sadness at leaving the familiar, leaving friends and classmates that bond had been established with, though some of us ended up at the same school. At the time of integration, I never thought about how our parents felt sending their children into a situation that left them exposed to the hate and violence of racism. But in later years, I weep at the sense of helpfulness they undoubtedly felt. My parents never really sat us down and discussed the situation. My parents' generation always expected their children, no matter what, to carry themselves with respect, honor, and integrity, to be bold and courageous. They instilled in us a sense of wisdom and understanding that will be necessary to maintain balance, a spirit of character that though your skin color may arouse animosity, your carriage will not. Did I experience racism? Yes. But the factors involved in my response to it depended entirely on my grasp of the situation. Oftentimes, what would be considered racism was not knowing and curiosity of the unknown. Oh, yes, there was meanness also. I remember being asked if they could touch my skin, and the sound of a small child singing a familiar childhood rhyme inserting the N-word for the actual word. I remember the astounded looks on the faces of those present when some offenses occurred. No, there was not a sense of acceptance, or that is just the way it is, not anger, sadness, that a beautiful mind had been so distorted. We are all God's children. We all have a responsibility to maintain a positive collective citizenry consciousness. Therefore, we really need to examine closely the whys of behaviors that serve to offend or degrade members of color of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peery. You had us very good. As time goes on, we want to remember another icon that was in our town of Tasswell, Jim Hickambotham. Jim Hickambotham had the distinction of being the first black chief of police for the town of Tasswell, where he served from 1987 to 1994. He was a citizen of Tasswell his entire life. Jim Hickambotham was a veteran of World War II. After the war, he returned back to Tasswell. He worked at Walker Chevrolet, Perry and St. Clair Hardwood Store, and the Funeral Home. Chief Hickambotham volunteered at the Tasswell Rescue Squad and Tasswell Community Hospital before he began his career in law enforcement. Not only was Chief Hickambotham the first black police chief for the town of Tasswell, he was the first black deputy for Tasswell County, and something I was kind of, was on my mind, I didn't put down, that I liked to share with some of you, may or may not remember, but the time in later years I saved Councilman Foxwood, Jim Hickambotham led Klansmen down Main Street, but they could not cover their face. I understand what Chief Hickambotham done, because you have a right to assemble yourself, and they came for a permit in town of Tasswell, and she told them, said, "I cannot deny you the permit." Said, "But you have to uncover your face." So, I don't have the ears that that happened, but I only can imagine what that black man felt, like walking down the middle of Main Street in the middle of a group of Klansmen. That's the kind of chief of police Jim Hickambotham was. So, I'm thankful to see everybody here today, and I know we have a lot more people that have worked in our town of Tasswell, men and women, who's paid the price in black history. We've had people work in the school system, the courthouses, EMS, doctors, lawyers, janitors, and many have worked in the town of Tasswell. One man I remember is someone that's been here a long time ago, they might remember Mr. Preston Cecil. I remember he worked at the water sewer plant. And some of the kids sitting in the room, who in the reason I call them kids is because they're a lot older than they are, but it's one lady, I mean, I could go on and on with a lot of ladies, but it's one lady that we dearly love, and she made her mark in history and especially on our hearts. And if some of you don't remember, Ms. Ruth Smith. She was an icon in this town. She loved everybody, and she done the best she could for everybody. And then I want to thank everybody for inviting us to attend, but at this point, I have a secret that Dr. Mullins is gonna share with everyone.
Flora asked me to talk about this photograph, which I'm sure you cannot see, but I'm gonna give it to Flora, and she might want to pass it around. The photograph apparently is at the Tasswell Female Seminary, and I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about that and a little bit about that picture, and maybe give us all some food for thought. We've been hearing about the black heritage in the past, in the 20th century, basically, but I'm gonna bounce back even further. Now, we're going back to the 19th century, and I'm gonna talk about an event, apparently, that occurred about 20 years after the Civil War ended, which is in, it felt, may look that picture, that photograph, so remarkable. For those of you who don't know, the Tasswell Female Seminary was established in 1886, and it was established at what is now 623 Finn Castle Turnpike. Chris took me a while to figure out what that address was with the new layout, but that's where it was. It's out on Finn Castle, and it's the home that is now the home to Donald and Sharon Smith, or that's where their homes built, I should say. The building that was the Female Seminary, in certain this community, burned prior to even being here 10 years, it was burned in the 1890s. And at that time, the student body, which was female, was consolidated with the Tasswell College, which some of you may know was down toward the Carline up on the hill at the end of what we call Hotel Avenue today. But those two schools were schools that provided education for girls, and in the case of the college, for young men too, for this community and beyond. The Tasswell College and the Tasswell Female Seminary were both established about the same time Tasswell High School was established on Main Street, and all three of them served as educators for Tasswell's youth in the late 1800s. The photo that Flora is passing around now shares with us today and shows that the Tasswell Female Seminary in the late 1880s and late 1890s, and for reasons that we have not been able to uncover, even though Flora promised me, thinking that I would give her all the answers, I was not able to, but it's quite interesting because in that photo, it shows a large group of African-American young people dressed for a very formal occasion. If you look at it carefully, you'll see that they're all dressed to kill. And they're pictured on the first and second floor porches of the seminary. And what's amazing to me is this was two, only two decades after the Civil War had ended, that these young ladies and young gentlemen, African-Americans all, were pictured in the Tasswell community at the school. Why they were there, we do not know, but they were dressed But they were dressed for something. It was an event, no doubt. That they were there shows a community that apparently, in the late 1800s, was ahead of its time in the 19th century. Because that picture is taken during the era of Black Coats and Jim Crow laws, which segregated people in the South. At that time, these young people are pictured at the Tasswell Female Seminary. Sometimes history offers us glimpses into the lives of those who preceded it. Sometimes those glimpses are left to us to have to interpret, and to try, sometimes to understand. So this image gives us an opportunity to reflect on our own history, to think about our own time, to think about our own heritage, and to think about that of our community as we celebrate this year's Black History Month.
Thank you. I thank Dr. Mullins for taking the time trying to look that up, because a resident in this town, who brought that picture before me several years ago, and asking about that, I said, "I don't know anything about it, hadn't seen it." So we figured, the school was up there kind of vicinity like where Sharon Smith and Dr. Hunter live, and apparently the house burned. Well, the man's wife got sick, they moved to the Carolinas, so he had to sell his home. And he came by one day, and he brought that picture back, and he said, "Flora," he said, "I want you to have this picture." I noticed the picture's fading, but I think it's where it's hung in the sun. But I mean, it's just so amazing, and I could see how the people were so stressed in those days, I can only imagine. Our program's coming to an end, and again, I thank everybody for being here. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Jeanette Wilson to come up and read two poems, either from her grandfather or brother George Dickerson, "Once Tasswell's Love" and "Once Town of Tasswell." And I hope everyone enjoyed your program.
First, I would like to say thank you for inviting me, and I'd also like to say, tell you about another trailblazer, because I got to bring on my brother, because his name is John Radley.
Yes.
And he was an All-American for Tasswell High School. And he took a leap of faith and went to the University of Virginia, and was one of the first black young men to be chosen on the team for the University of Virginia football. So he had to go through a lot of trials and errors, just to, he was excellent person, excellent, very, very smart man. And so he got a full scholarship down there, and he chose the University of Virginia. But they did a documentary on him, and you can find it on YouTube, and it's a really good documentary of what he had to face as far as being the first black young man to be on the football team. So I just want to put that out there. Also, I just want to read, I'm going to read from my grandfather's poem book, "Tasswell Town," because he was born in 1873, and he taught my uncle George everything he knew about life, and that's the reason George Dickerson was able to do what he did for this community also. And I'm just going to say that George Mills Dickerson was born in 1873. He was a preacher, he was a teacher, he was a poet, he might even be on that picture that you have. And he was a father. But George Mary Dickerson, who was my uncle George, was born July 31st, 1917. The name of the book is called "The Voice From Virginia Hills," which was written by my grandfather. And I just want to say that this was a father and a son, two generations, two different eras of time, putting their lives and stories on paper in words with a poetic rhythm, and their love for Christ, their family, their community, as well as a dream of equality for all mankind. So the first one I want to read is "Tasswell Town." "Oh, little town among the hills, I love the streets as spares. I love thy people better still, their children and their sires. The courthouse with its offices, the wide and ringing hall, the men who held the businesses down, I think I see them all. The lime kiln and the powerhouse, the streetcar and the barn, the coal bens where we got the stuff to keep our children warm, the dam across Prince River deep, above Hall's lumberyard, where boys and girls would come and skate when the ice was baking hard. And sometimes, when the day was ripe, the people came to fish and went back home with heavy string to fill a tempting dish. The packing house on Whitley Ranch, the cow and hog did slaughter, and dressed the meat so nice and fine to make a man's mouth water. The wealthy men who used God's goods just like they were their own, a marvel of a settlement that surest fate must come. The happy homes where boys and girls grew up like choicest flowers, where parents served the Lord and taught their children of God's power. The black folks and the white folks too, they seem to need each other, and as a gentle thing, they seem to get along together. As Christian hearts and Christian hands were there to do their duty, religion in practical form, it was a thing of beauty. And the prisoners in the jail, we sang and prayed and read. Some paid a fine, some served a term, some were hung till dead. But two newspapers gave the news, both in and out of town, and every worthy one that died, they fixed the things up round. And sometime, when an honorary cuss died without faith or grace, they smoothed it and fixed it up so well, you almost want to take his place. For six years in a crowded room, with children large and small, I tried to teach the public school, but could not see them all. And little church in Tasswell Town, I never can forget. I labored there 11 years, I'm thinking of it yet. The deepest spot in Tasswell Town is where the maples grow, for there are love ones my sleep in maple wood so low. Though many changes have been made, our hearts have not forgot. Far memories led us wandering back around that dear old spot. And when my work on earth is done, I'll lay me down to rest in maple wood in Tasswell Town with those I love the best." Okay, and then we have, let's see, I lost my place here. It's called "Tasswell's Love For Tasswell's People." And, this is 53. There it is. Our parents, and my aunt Hettina, who played for Midway for so many years, they would, they made sure that all of the children and all of the grandchildren had this book, and they made sure that we would at least memorize one out of the books. This is "Tasswell's Love For Tasswell's People." "The Tasswell hills are just the same, as beautiful as ever, dependable as Tasswell hearts which distance cannot serve. Though Tasswell trees may drop their leaves when winter days are coming, they welcome Tasswell people home no matter where they're roaming. Though all the hills and all the trees may rear their heads above us, they cannot perish from the hearts of Tasswell friends that love us. The weary mouths may stretch between, till distance is appalling, your hearts shall hear the welcome voice of Tasswell people calling. Oh, time may bring its summer heat, or winter cold winds hissing, that Tasswell folks will not forget the names and faces missing. Or show death lie, a love one loath, and change our smile to weeping, we Tasswell folks will drop a tear where Tasswell friends are sleeping." So that was George M. Dickerson, George Mills Dickerson. Uncle George had the pamphlet with all his poems in it, like, because I'm colored, and asked Glance, and if you want to know what kind of man I am. So these are, this is our family history, and we want to keep it going, because it is Black history for our community. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. This is our program, and thank you, everyone.
Okay, it's Mr. Bob Harrington here from Bargo and Bob's Flea Market.
Yes. My name is Bob Harrington. I appreciate the invitation here tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself, and what we're trying to do is the old magic market, we're going to start a flea market there, and try to bring something to the community where there's, we have several things we're trying to do. One of the things being, we'll have a guest booth set up, that I'll be asking some of the local businesses that they're welcome to, every week I'll try to put someone else definitely in there. And I'm hoping to bring a lot of revenue, you know, different people from out of the area in here. The, you know, the local community will support the vendors, because most of them will just be locals. One thing I was, I tried to come in and give a little reminder, I spoke to Ann earlier, in regards to what I need to do, make sure that we're all in compliance. One of the things that's brought up is the business license. And I just asked the council to maybe think about, I think the permit vendors, if they probably should, they should have to pay the $20 license, and then it changes on their revenue after the following year. But for the people that have, for instance, someone's to discipline a garage, and come in here, you won't be there one day. Any way that the council can take a look at that, look at that in regards to, I think that stops somebody from coming in, they got to pay the rental fee on the spot, but then also have to pay a license fee, that they're only going to be there for one or two days, whatever. What I do suggest is, and some of the other flea markets throughout, they'll say, okay, if you're, if you should come within the year period, if you come here for three times, like the third time, yes, you're going to be required. But for someone just going to go there for, you know, one or two times, I was hoping that they could take a look at that and consider waiving that. I'm just wanting to get rid of a few things, because they're not going to be doing it as a business, they're just looking to get rid of something. Anybody have any questions on what we're looking to do?
We open seven days a week.
We're looking to be four days a week right now, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Looking to put a produce vendor in there. It's not just so much, some people look at the flea market as different ways, I'm looking to actually have more of a farmer's market with it, you know, where we have, you know, fresh produce and whatever else we can get locally.
The exemption that you're looking for are for those that are going to be there only...
If you want to clean your garage out, and you want, you want to move that stuff, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have to pay the license fee for just a one-time miss. I don't know, how do you work a yard sale?
Yard sales, you're doing like a flea market?
Yeah, I'm doing flea market. We're having a booth set up that they can, you can get a booth by the month, by the week, by the day.
Okay. So you only ask them a year, it's like a year, right?
No, well, that's only a rule that was established, but it's not official. That was established by PD years ago, and management, so that somebody wasn't doing it every week.
Sure. But I mean, isn't there a number on the books?
No. I don't think it is.
We've been on the way on Martin Street for quite a while, they come in, they check for a month, they ask about that spot, and all of those computers take the money and pay for the taxes, whatever it is, for the town.
No.
That's what I've seen at the flea market.
I mean, yeah, I was informed that the way it should be done, and I have the problem, is the vendor comes in, they set a booth up, I have the paperwork for them to fill out for their, for their license, and then I'm going to collect that and then turn it in. And that would be, I mean, that's fine for someone that's going to be there, and they're doing, to make a living, that's one thing.
So let me ask you again, the exemption from our code book that you're looking for is exactly what? What is it you're looking to change?
For a short-term person that's not going to be there...
Okay, so you're talking about just, if they're going to be in there just one day a year?
Well, I mean, I'm just going over what I've seen in the past.
Okay.
Okay, if they show up three times, three times in a year, okay, they have to pay that. And that's just, yeah, I just realize you have to put a set time for it.
What is three times? Is three times Thursday through Sunday, three times? Is three times... I'm just looking, what I'm trying to figure out is you're asking for some consideration, but I haven't, and maybe, it might just be me. What is it you're asking for so we can evaluate? Are you looking for that guy that's going to clean his garage, if he just wants to come one time a year, give him an exemption? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much.
Okay.
Is it just, I think, is it going to be one time, or you're going to allow that person to, you know, to be there three times in a year? That's basically, if they come, if they show up three different times, and when they first get there, they'll say, here's a situation, you'll have to pay a license, pay for a license if you come here...
Every week. Well, I think what Councilman Brown was saying was like, is one time, if I come Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is that considered one time, or is that considered four times?
I'm laying it out to you.
Right now, your code book for flea markets makes anybody that goes in obtain a license. It just reflects, different from yard sales. So, again, what I'm trying to find out, and it may be a little aggressive, and we can find out what other communities are doing, but would you be, would you concur, and I'm not saying we can do it, but we'll at least have something to evaluate, would you concur if we said, okay, if you're only going to do it for that one guy cleaning his garage out, just like the example, if you're coming up here one time, we'll give you an exemption, and it's fee-free for one time? Is that what you're asking for consideration for?
Well, I mean, I would...
He's asking for as much as he can get.
It's not to his benefit, then.
Because he's still charging them a fee, so if you...
It's to his benefit.
To his benefit, because they're not going to come do it and pay him if they have to pay us too.
Right.
I mean, in the past, I would, I guess what I'm asking, I would like to, I would like to see if they come, no more than three times in a year. If they show up three times in a year, and...
About three days in a year?
Well, that's what you're saying. It may take, it may take a weekend or whatever, two or three days to sell all this stuff.
All right, so is that the three days you're talking about?
That would be totally up to you. I'll leave, I would prefer to have it three separate times. If you have three weekends, that's fine, but I don't consider them permanent, permanent vendor.
Okay. So what we can, what we can do is if you have a town resident, I guess is what you're talking about, and what I'll take the council in the future to try to change, when I say future, might be a month or two months, and then you got to have a process of government that takes three years, but I'm being facetious, but three times.
What about residents of this town?
If you live in town, he's just asking for that guy that's going to be, if that guy lives in Richland, they want to clean their basement out and come up here, I think they... If you lived in town, he's just asking for that guy that's gonna be, if that guy lives in Richland, they want to clean their basement out and come up here, I think they, that's just my opinion, I'm just giving you the feeling. Uh, but, okay, three times, so we'll, we'll look at that. Absolutely, I appreciate it. Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do your vendors, they're there with their product?
Yes, yes, it's not, it's not a co-op work, they, they have to take care of their own.
So whenever somebody's selling, they're gonna be there?
Yes.
So you're gonna have some people that are gonna say, man, I will fix spot every day you're open.
Yeah.
You go ahead. Okay.
They'll, they'll have, they should have paid.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item number four, new business recognition, nothing scheduled. So uh, next is the approval of the minutes on the council meeting of January twelfth, ten, twenty-one, and a special call to on executive session of council and IEDA of January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Summon.
A second? Motion carries. And next is the approval of the financial statements and financial reporting. So uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? Alright, motion carries. Now we can go on. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report of January twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a motion to approve?
Summon.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All, all in favor of approval, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? Motion carries. Next is the uh, committee conference updates, and uh, Councilmember Davis will give us the planning commission committee update.
The planning commission, we met last Monday, and we had an individual come forward that is looking to put in a business at a location that would be subject to the overlay district. So, and that is coming up a little bit later on, that we're gonna talk about that, so. I'll leave it to that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Uh, one's the SGR primary extension update. Manager Dave.
Okay, there are, there are a multitude of streets in town that hold main water lines that are in desperate need of being replaced. One of those targets on our list was Tazle Avenue from Carline all the way to Finn Castle. Um, in the meantime, I was awarded a grant, hundred percent, grant money from VDOT to pave Tazle Avenue from Carline all the way to Finn Castle. But we also have, which is the next issue on here, a water line project that's going from the cave all the way out to the four sixty corridor. Um, I don't know if I can handle the phone calls and pairing up two different routes in the same, I lived through Finn Castle. So um, I had originally asked VDOT for an extension on Tazle Avenue while I was sitting back waiting on a return from, from VRA on the funding that we, you know, y'all were able to approve that. So, um, just want to let you know that we've pulled the water line project off of Tazle Avenue, and we are gonna pave it. It'll be paved um, early. It's being done administratively through VDOT. They're gonna do it in-house. We won't be doing that route. So it'll be paved by VDOT from Carline all the way to Finn Castle. And we'll just come back and reevaluate it after the three-year project on four sixty, which I'm gonna kind of flow to the next issue here. Um, at best, at best, that project will not start till late August. At best, that's if everything goes good, nothing gets hung up in Richmond. VRA, by the way, approves the funding and the ability to debt service it in one point three. So um, that'll be here before you know it. And keep in mind, that's at best. So I just want to let you know, we will be paving Tazle Avenue from at least Carline all the way up to Finn Castle to match into what we already paved. We'll look at that water line later on down the road. So it might be four, five, or six years before we come back and look at it. A majority of that route, by the way, is off the shoulder. It's only the crosscuts that would be, uh, so anyway, just wanted to give you kind of an update. That's all we have to make. Does y'all have any questions?
Any questions? Okay, moving on. We got the rezoning request for four nine nine Main Street and five twenty-three Main Street. Chris, you wanna give us a little update?
Last year, we had a monitorized approach, we actually paid for a permit, a rezoning permit. And that request was on hold. Then we had Mr. Dunbar come in a couple of months ago, request the same rezoning. Uh, does anybody need match for that, or is everybody married with it?
Now, this isn't the same one that Mr. Dunbar pulled?
Yeah, this is uh, down here on Main Street on the left, actually top of the hill. You know, I'm looking, uh, there's things in R two right now.
So the one you were talking about mayor before, he was wanting to close the road.
Right.
This is just a rezoning, this is probably the last few.
Chris asked, why don't we do both sides of the road and pick down?
Right.
Uh, by ten property owners. The three across the street, everybody touching the blue area, it's circled in red. Uh, all had all the counter seats, all of them won. So nine out of ten people got their letters. And of course, no one showed up for, for the public hearing, and uh, through planning commission now, it's just before we all vote on. We got two people requesting rezoning for that area. Of course, there's one in the middle.
So all the legal advertising was done, the process was done administratively correctly, the planning commission has approved, and it's just being moved to cancel I need a motion to-
Make a motion to approve, Mayor? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the rezoning request, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? Next is the recycling center hours discussion, Manager Dave.
Alright, um, I contacted uh, Councilmember Davis earlier in the week, and um, she actually brought up last council meeting, changing of the times at the recycling center. Um, the landfill closes on Saturday at four thirty, is that right, Chris? Or four?
Four.
Four o'clock. So in, in order to dump those dumpsters on Saturday, we have to start at at least one thirty, two o'clock. Um, it's a hour, it takes about an hour, by the time you run back and forth. My concern, after the experience of last, last couple of weeks, is they're gonna get full.
Don't until dusk now, right?
Yeah. Until, it's gonna get dark till nine o'clock in the summer, and then they're gonna be full. Well, they're not open Sundays.
Right.
So I can't.
You can't dump them.
Can't dump them. So Monday morning, it's gonna be empty there. So I'm requesting council's consideration to leave it open for six days a week, but closing on Sunday, we call it that. You know, they're still gonna be full Sunday morning. You know, it's not gonna be open Monday morning, they're gonna be overflowing.
Correct.
Um, there's not much we can do about it. So I'm just asking for council's support, six days a week, closing Sunday.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Because you don't want it to be-
A mess.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, those concerns on that meeting.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tell you, it, it can, yeah.
Well, if you're seeing that already.
Absolutely.
Well, and I've had people contacting me that are appreciative, that we had opened up the dates instead of just the three days that we didn't have it. But I think it does sound reasonable to go ahead and, and close on Sunday, so we don't have a-
The winter time's not bad, because if you notice now, it's not getting dark at six, but it was five, and by the time we dump them on Saturday, which is overtime, by the way, it's always overtime on Saturdays, always. So by the time we go up there and dump them, nobody can use them by the time it gets dark, so we close the gates. But, you know, at nine o'clock in the summertime, we're gonna get hammered. Then the sun, yeah, there's gonna-
Can you change it to till six instead of till dusk?
Hmm, if you want to.
Just have it six. Yeah, like say, maybe close at, early five or six or something.
Yeah, that'll work. We'll start dumping them, like I said, at one, one thirty, two o'clock. And by the time we get, we get done, you know, it's landfill closing.
Why don't we do six o'clock daily instead of like-
With the session of Sunday?
Yes.
Well, you've got a lot of people that work until-
Well, I work all day till six, but I have some, then I can do it on Saturdays. So I'm just trying to think about overtime and, I mean, we're doubling the time we're open at this point, alright?
But we're not, we're not out anything.
Other than the employees coming out on Saturday.
Saturday.
Right, but we were doing that anyway, because it was already open on Saturday. So we're not out anything.
Well, they weren't, they weren't emptying the dumpsters on Saturday, I believe, or they-
It just depends on the situation. Like, if, if it was a holiday, or it just depends, you know, we could go up there and check it. Sometimes they were working-
We're just trying to figure out what's good for the community, but also doesn't further stress public works.
I personally like the certain hour. I would really prefer to know that they're closing at a certain hour than dusk, because I don't know what dusk means.
And it changes, it changes every week.
Yeah, it would be targeted, so.
It's totally up to y'all, I just don't know how you want. The Sunday thing's all I'm asking for.
Seven?
I would say maybe seven or eight.
Think about it, if they're not dumping it at the landfill, any day of the week, after what, tons of landfill closed during the week? Right, it's the next morning. Right.
Landfill late at four Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday. I also think about like the houses right across the street from there.
And keep in mind, when you say, when you say seven, in the summertime, that's good. But like, right now?
Right now, it's dark.
It's dark, too, out there.
Dark, so.
Right. I think we leave it at dusk for now, and we can reevaluate.
See how things out as, as dusk gets later.
Yeah. We're gonna, I don't care, I don't care how you do it, you're gonna, somebody, we're gonna shut the gate, and somebody's gonna call me Monday and say, y'all shut it twenty minutes before dusk. So, yeah, I don't care what, either way you go, we'll manage it. Either way, we'll manage it. So again, the consideration of Sunday is gonna help out a lot.
I think on Saturday, you should close it at four, if the landfill closes at four. You put it out there, I mean-
As long as it's posted and people know.
Yeah.
They, they get used to it. Alright, so you're saying dusk-
It had already been dusk though on Saturday.
Maybe that's four.
But it cuts out some of your overtime.
Yeah. Public Works only deals with that when they were dumping it, right?
Uh, they'll, they'll look at, they, they go up there on Saturdays and look at it. Yeah. That's, it's just on, we'll dump it during work, regular work hours. Uh, man, if it's a holiday, they might go up there and, okay. Saturdays, it just, it just depends, you know?
What time do we open?
They like it.
They like it.
They like it.
Oh, they like it.
Fun, right?
They like it.
Five in the morning in the summer.
Something I'm talking about, they're six forty-five, they've already come over and opened it up.
And if police department opens it, and what'll happen, you'll get a phone call, they're all working a case, and, you know, it happens at Lincolnshire, and, man, if we get tore up. It just happens, it's just a major break. So again, if I'm hearing Donald, the dump, six days a week, and close at Sunday on a good day?
Good day.
I'll bring it back, it's a new program. Yeah, it's a new program, so it's gonna, it's gonna, it took us a while to master Lincolnshire, so we'll, I'll bring it back. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're gonna, or any miscellaneous? So uh, next is new business, the approval of budget amendments. Manager Dave.
I'm gonna hand it to Mr. Bruce, Mr. Donald, I'm gonna-
Um, you'll find the first set of budget amendments, Leanne has worked up. Anytime that we have an account that we get money for, that we don't have one established, we need to bring that before council, so we can show you that the, the revenues coming in. That's what she's done on that first section. Throughout the others, you'll notice, um, we may have, it just, it's cleaning up each department. We may have one line item that has been blown out, we kind of want to take away from their, other, maybe other departments to fill that line item. So we're just making the budget look better within the departments. But that needs to be approved anytime we change that for council. That's what all of these are. All the way back through there, you'll notice, like, if you look at, um, for example, the first one on there where it says, um, you're taking out a hundred thousand, but you're putting it in two of the line items where we're short, those will always go down. So we're taking out a hundred thousand, we're putting in a two thousand. You'll see that through every single page of the budget amendments.
Let me elaborate on that one just a little bit, and those mayors are well aware of it. We got some funds from the rescue squad, I mean, from the county, some COVID-related funds. And it was, the funds were designated for rescue squad salaries. Well, I've already got a budget, so how do you do that? Well, the only way to do it and make the records look good, is to paper trail, is we ran over and paved it. Ran over and paved it. So I took a hundred thousand dollars from the rescue squad salary line item, and I moved it throughout the departments that needed it. One of the biggest ones was paving. Another one was that sidewalk on Maplewood, it was, it was a five thousand dollar line item, I think it was, twenty thousand dollars we spent. So I'm moving a lot of that hundred thousand dollars over to that sidewalk line item, so I can prob, so I can try to finish it this coming summer. The money that the county's giving to me, I'm putting that hundred thousand dollars into the EMS line item. So you're saying, well, it's already in there. I know, you gotta have that paper trail right. So we're moving it out, we're spreading it out across different line items, we're making some other changes, but I'm taking that hundred thousand dollars and putting it right back in EMS salary. So when they ask me what I did with the money, I can say, right here it is. I did a budget amendment, in open form, with council, they voted on it, put it in EMS salary. And all I needed was a motion to approve those amendments.
I'll make a motion, but I also have a, just a general question. What is a game of skill, folks?
Again? Okay, so in your convenience stores, have you ever seen the little, kind of?
Slot machine?
Yeah, slot machine, basically. It's kind of like a little game.
Okay.
So you go in and you play that and-
It's like the poker machines that they have at bars sometimes.
Yeah, we get revenue from it.
Right, it's the Moose Club, I remember. Well, I saw those, that little store, that River Jack, I think.
They do, they do.
They're exempt.
Who?
For what?
The River Jack store should be exempt. Oh, we ain't really visiting somebody now.
What do you mean, Tim?
I don't know, it's off the track.
What he means is it's his story. That's all.
Okay, so that was just my question.
I saw that too, how it looked like. Well, the Moose is on the other side of the tracks too, Tim.
Yeah, but-
It don't count?
I don't know.
DTEs versus the West End.
I just need a motion to approve, to get the-
Can I get a motion to approve, approval of budget amendments?
Right.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? Alright, the budget amendments are approved. Next is the planning commission recommendation request from Bulldog Self-Store Old Dominion Construction LSC. Chris?
Back in May of twenty nineteen, the general call, somebody, we done all of that district. Most areas, and it looks like it moved by. Has to go through planning commission, and then has to go to JAL. So this plan has went through planning commission, and the head came to us twice to get it right. But this is his claim for the area- But this is his plan for the area adjacent to his self-storage, because it's there now. And he's wanting to build the, uh, block that's grown up and.
High below David Dick's building, same.
Yeah, it'd be to the right of David Dick's house.
It's like a cutout, cutout apartment area, like they couldn't bank out?
Yeah, a little notch there for something small.
This is where he is.
What's he going to put there?
Storage building, just like you got.
He's down to the bottom right, but he's got a building over there.
So where's his building now?
It's where that dirt.
Oh, so he wants to do all this?
Yeah. This is, uh.
On that corner.
This was on tax office.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
His PDS is over here.
Yeah.
I wish it were.
This might not be completely filled up with this many buildings, but we may even bring us what the max would be on that block. So he might not have all these on there.
I told him, he ain't going to get all them buildings on his rock.
Well, and I don't think that he thinks he's going to get them all there. Because there's a lot of rock that.
It also depends on how much rock it gets back here.
Right.
Yeah.
That little lot, you know, if y'all will recall, the, the, the reason for the overlay, reason it was ever brought up was because of those buildings, the storage buildings there now, I couldn't stand the idea of having that in. But that lot right there is right across kind of diagonal front, but I don't know what else you could do there, so I don't have any problem with it. He asked me about the Kensington lot, and I told him right off the bat, I said, right there, did you go after? I said, I'm going to, I had two from them, and, you know, it's not good. So he said, okay. But that cost.
So this was his second choice.
That's a Kensington lot, it's an incredible lot.
Oh, yeah.
It's an amazing spot.
And we held his feet to the fire on, uh, you know, Nichols is a landscape of a lot, you know, it's around the corner, it's got trees and, uh, it's a part of the landscape of a lot, you know, it's way down with the name there.
Basically, he has, um, required us to have paving coming into it, he has. He says that he has this going to be sloping back towards the back of the lot, so basically where he has the, um, the cut in. So that would solve a lot of the drainage issues that you might have. Um, we also said that the lighting that he puts in there, that it needs to be angled down.
Yeah, down lighting, because you got houses about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and we got this house right there too. Um, he wants to put a common chip sign right there on the corner. Um, and the only thing we said about that was the lighting too.
Not real bright, not flash. Slowly change.
Do you actually have, sorry? I'm looking.
Yeah, yeah, the same, the same storage, and basically his buildings that he's just put in there are going to look better.
The only common camp, it'll be in.
It's a stadium.
Right.
He's right there.
Yeah, he did bring it up a couple times.
So to, uh, go with the old lady, rules already, motion to approve, so I was like, I am, it's all.
Planning position, we're on.
And they had to come back twice, he had to sort it out. Manager stuff. So I wasn't able to speak.
I just need if council's okay with pursuing the four planning commission recommendations and approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the planning commission's recommendation, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying aye? The, uh, recommendation passes. Next is the appointment or appointed redistricting committee member, manager day.
I don't really know what happened.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think Mike Hines put me on.
Let's just table this one for right now. What it is, every 10 years, the county redistricts, and it's one of the most political boards you'll ever serve on if you do it, because everybody's fighting, there's more Democrats down that way, there's more Republicans over there, we need that area. So they, they get a member from each district, and it can be pretty brutal.
Sounds like something Joe would like.
I think, if I understand it correctly, Mike, Mike Hines may have already approached, may who? So let me find out, but is it, if you want to serve on it if you haven't?
Uh, I'll look through the paperwork. He tends to throw me on a lot of things. I just received a letter in the mail, it's like, hey, congratulations.
It can be pretty brutal.
Okay, before we go into miscellaneous, we're going to discuss the appointments to the, the IEDA. IEDA? So, uh, two names were mentioned, we have two open spots that, that we need to fill, and two names were mentioned. One was, uh, a previous councilwoman, and she served on the IEDA with Ms. Nancy Brooks. So she had said she would like to continue and go back and serve in that capacity. So, uh, guess we just need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second, second. Any discussion? All in favor, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying aye? Okay, so that's one, and then, uh, the next member's name, I was put forward by Dr. Mullins, was, uh, Zach Cash, who is on our historic review board also. So, uh, I would need a motion to move forward to asking Mr. Cash to, I have some moves to get a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying aye? Okay, so we, uh, we'll get the letters out to the two new potential members.
Didn't get to go to build the tools.
Yeah, who'd we go with?
Motion to approve? Okay, uh, so to add Mr. Danny Willis to the, uh.
For building.
Really? Yeah. Yes, so, uh, can I get a?
I'm going to make a motion.
All right, can I get a second?
Second, a hearty, a hearty second.
I can't tell if he's excited or not, he's wearing a mask. So all in favor, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying aye? Welcome, Mr. Willis. So, uh, next is the miscellaneous public comments. Uh, do we have anyone signed up? So. Do you have anything to say, Stan? No? Okay, and finally, any additional council comments before we adjourn?
I'll say thank you to Florida again for a great job, and great.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That was amazing.
All right, all I need is that motion to adjourn.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The, uh.
Kids are pointing, here's the tape.
Breaking protocol, all right.
Just the bridge project that Eric, if he has that.
It'll be good, it's a hit of schedule. Um, I could call you tomorrow and give you a finished date on, but it is a hit of schedule.
I could get that to say.
I gotta, I gotta talk to him respectfully, find out what it is. I usually talk to him about every couple of weeks, they call. I'll let you know.
All right, can I get a motion?
Wait, I want to make one comment about, um, Ruth Smith. Um, I haven't told very many people this story, but Ruth Smith, when my dad died, I was single at the time, and whenever we were walking out from the funeral, my mom was walking with my brother Mark, Eric was walking with his wife Leanne, Kelly was walking with her husband, Amy was walking with her boyfriend, and I was walking alone. And Ruth Smith stood up and walked out of the church with me, so I wouldn't have to walk alone.
Ooh, she was on page three.
She, and I'm sure she kept you in line too.
Oh, you're the best for this.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell a story.
Should have locked it out of her, because she was.
Oh, yeah.
So can I get a motion to adjourn? Get a second? All in favor?